Ms. Jackson, are you?
Good evening, Council members, citizens, council members, members of the Board. I'm going to ask Councilman Wood if he would to remember the, uh, courtesy rules. If you have any devices, please put them on the side. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Jackson if you would be so kind to give us an indication.
If you evaluate, dear Mr. Bobby, thank you for this day and with this opportunity to come before your holy and precious God. Oh God, we just thank you for guiding us in every decision that we make on this evening. We move anything that is unlike you, oh God. We lend ourselves, we yield ourselves to your Holy Spirit. We say move and direct, use us for your glory and yours alone. These are all of the blessings we ask of your son, Jesus, and make me pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Also, we have a second session tonight for about twenty minutes to discuss legal matters. At this time, it's time for the pleading meeting. Our pleading committee is to the right, on the land space of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, members.
President Bowie, Councilwoman Bowlin.
President.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson, President, Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph.
President.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
President.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
As stated before, we do have a board to conduct the second business, the character trait of the United States of Justice, taking personal responsibility to uphold what is pure, right, and true. At this time, council members, you have before you the May fourteenth, record of gender, any questions, corrections. At this time, the children obtain motion to adopt the May fourteenth of January. Yeah, most of them support Councilwoman Bowlin.
Sir.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson, in part of discussion. Roll call, members.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson, yes, Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas, yes, Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, record of gender, most of them have approved, now, in part of discussion. Council members, you have before you eight items for the seven gender. Uh, I will review each item at any point in time if you would like to remove an item to discuss separately if you can, but we spoke at length about all eight items on last night, so hopefully it's two good call. Consent item number one is to approve residents of all zero one two nine, that's eighteen nineteen, plan six hundred and forty, that's search laws from Southern Police Department, consent item number two, to approve residents of all one thirty, that's eighteen nineteen, for twenty nineteen, back to school sale, tax holiday, exempt service, cover items for municipal sale and use tax, due date twelve one one eight, on Friday, July nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and end at twelve a.m. on Sunday, July twenty first, twenty nineteen. Consent item number three, to approve residents of all zero one thirty one, that's eighteen nineteen, decline, a month made, that's no cash awareness month, dissent item number four, to approve, so that S R hold agreement between the city of seven and seven cities for the school system, who paid to S R hold officer, and the city of seven who paid to one S R hold officer, already given off in the police budget, and the other is called old officer who has been paid via grant funding. Consent item number five, to approve a fee waiver for the business center for the twenty twenty thousand pound job task force, uh, job fair for Wednesday, May thirteenth, twenty and consent item number six, to approve the graduate program program through the state of Baltimore for all youth funded as a business means to find the project. Consent item number seven, to approve residents of all zero one thirty two, that's eighteen nineteen, seeking the attorney general, a thing about all of the songs being used for overall rights, and consent item number eight, to approve custom prayers for the loading and unloading parking space. At this time, children obtain motion to approve, most of them support Councilwoman Shaw, second by Councilwoman, in part of discussion, roll call, members.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, consent item number one approved, now, members. Council members, you have before you the April twenty third minutes. Uh, hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to prove the minutes, are there any corrections, devices? At this time, children obtain motion to approve the April twenty third, twenty nineteen, we have most of them support by Councilwoman Youngblood.
Sir.
Second, Councilwoman Bowlin, in part of discussion, roll call, members.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes were approved, announcement. Council members, we're down to the announcement call. Uh, before I go over to each council member, uh, I would like to ask Chief Carter if he would please come forward. I would like to thank Chief Carter and all of the Southern Police Department, who they did a great job about a week ago with Selma High, um, could have turned very badly, but with the timing of this month, um, they were first in part advantage, and I just want to recognize and thank you, and also police officers, for having that situation. You might certainly have to.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Who we have, any, any comments?
Thank you, Ms. President.
At this time, um, are there any announcements for, for the ward? Councilwoman Bowlin.
Again, just like to thank all the other councilors for moving forward with the Ward One drainage project, getting that squared away for us means a lot to the good citizens of Ward One, so I want to thank everybody for participating in that, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to work together on the ward, positive things like this. Thank y'all.
Any others?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. President.
Uh, so I want to, uh, I'd make an announcement.
First.
Okay, the American League holds three twenty-four, and Commander Benson Webb will be holding a cleanup service at Lawrence and Harrison Memorial Garden, um, May twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, uh, they is ground cleaning the whole cemetery over, at the time, eight a.m. until, and that's going to be, uh, going to Memorial Day, uh, weekend, and they invite people to, to this cleanup effort, family members assisting locating sites or service members would be appreciated. So it's in, if you got any family members there that have sent, uh, uh, this, do the time served, let them know that they want to put a flag on all the veterans, uh, in Memorial, in Lawrence and Harrison Memorial, uh, Garden, uh, to honor them, and, um, so if you have a problem, please contact Mr. Benson Webb at, uh, three two four one four four zero seven, and Mr. Dennis Plucker at two oh eight two nine one three. So, uh, this is something that, um, American League holds three twenty-four, uh, would be getting together on Memorial Day weekend to clean out, uh, the helping out of Lawrence and Harrison Memorial Garden, and they say they're going to do the whole, in town, our cemetery. And also, I want to thank, um, Mr. Um, Leo Strong for outstanding the dedication they did on Sunday at Brown Church, uh, on Mother's Day, it was awesome, the dedication they did, and I want to thank you, Mr. Strong, for what you and the church did, thank you on Mother's Day. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm glad that the, the entire cemetery is going to be cleaned, Councilwoman Johnson, thank you for that announcement. My dad went out and, um, with his neighbors today, and they did some cutting out there. Um, my granddad is there, my mom is there, my sister and her twins, you know, so they cut that area and all the areas around me, so I'm glad that the entire cemetery is not going to be cut. Uh, it was a sight to see on Mother's Day, but we did a lot of cleaning, um, Saturday and Sunday. Thank you all who came. Um, just reminding you all of Jazz on Grass, June fifteenth, always Father's Day Saturday, okay, always Saturday before Father's Day, uh, all day from twelve to ten p.m., so twelve bring the kiddies out, and later on you can come, you can drop them off to the baby suit and come on back out for the jazz. So it's going to be all day, I'll remind you as we get closer of the light, okay? Ward four will be having a special wide ward meeting, uh, coming up, and I just wanted the citizens to get ready for it. This is for Magnolia one, Magnolia two, and Magnolia Senior Village. You might, you all might have seen a video of the management out there, uh, saying some terrifying news about the city and what the city was responsible for. It is an untruth, and so I will have the citizens here, Adam, in this chamber right here, and we will be talking, hopefully the health inspector will come and all those people from Public Works will come, to let the citizens know and to let everyone else know that, uh, this is not a city issue, the city is trying to help, uh, relieve, uh, people. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, for calling me over the weekend and giving me, uh, the number to the person that was having, uh, uh, distress over there in Magnolia because of management on the property. I want to thank, uh, the council members, so we had, we had two RIMIC cut-ins of two very, very young people on last week, it was done on my, uh, Mother's Day, on my Mother's Day, but not on Mother's Day, my mother's birthday. Uh, and, um, you all came out and you showed two teenagers what community looks like when young people set their mind to opening up a business, uh, and sharing their vi- their vision for Selma. It was a great representation of what Selma looks like. Uh, a lot of you in the audience were there, a lot of you in the audience, young, old, black, white, little itty bitties and real tals, all in between, uh, were there, and my son has not stopped talking about it yet, and, and one of the things that he really has not stopped talking about is that, Mom, I had seven of the nine council members at my RIMIC cutting, like, he had seven of them there, and so, uh, thank all of you who came, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman LaShaw, President Bowie, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman, uh, Youngblood, uh, I know it was your birthday, Councilwoman Bowlin, and I told him that, I also told him what you told me to tell him, you're going to throw him some work, and Councilwoman Shaw is going to throw him some work, and, uh, thank you, and I know you probably were busy with your mom. So, I, I just want to thank y'all for that support, it was a good vision, and this is what Selma does, and this is what Selma looks like, and I'm glad you all did, decided to do it for a young person, uh, just to remind him and to remind us, uh, we put the unity back in community that day, and so I want to appreciate y'all for that. Thank you so much, the Johnsons, I'm a missing name David, the Johnsons, Adam, all y'all out there, Nikki from back in the day, all of y'all came, and so thank you so much, and I, I'm talking long about it because my son has been talking long about it, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, I mean Benjamin, did you need any police officers for Jazz on the Garden?
I do, I do, I send in my regular, uh, request sheet, the same one I send in every year.
Do you see seating on that?
I will, uh-huh, I will.
Hold on, Councilwoman Shaw, then Councilwoman Thomas.
One of the biggest ones, and most people again, is in Target, and I would like for this council, since we have not had a group picture taken, I would like for this council to commission him to, to undertake that task. The man has been reasonable.
That'll be a good idea, can you, can you make that up?
Yeah, I'm going to connect him and Councilwoman Shaw in that case, you don't mind, you don't mind?
All right, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Thomas.
Okay, I want, first I want to ask the chief a question. Chief, we, uh, Tabernacle Historic Baptist Church is planning a big day, and you know we have, uh, events where we wanted to get the, the street blocked off, uh, I just want to give you heads up that I would be having some information be coming to you, asking you to please block the street off, have it blocked off for now.
Do you mind telling me, going to tell me the day of this day?
Oh, it's going to be on like on a, it's on a weekend. We just need the barrel to be have the area blocked off.
Can you send in the paperwork, will you just make sure I'm CC?
Yeah, that's why I've let you know that it's, it's on the way, so we wanted to know what, you know, we'd be able to.
I'll be, I'll be.
All right, thank you. And also, I want to say, apologize to the citizens, uh, in my area, you know, May is our month of, uh, community, stop the violence, uh, the first week of May we always have it, where each, uh, uh, parents and the community come out, in the community, we have a big day, and we always have it at Seven University. Um, they called me, they asked me, will we going to have one now? Yes, we are going to have it, um, my schedule doing other things have, um, kind of throw me back, but I promised the, the community that we will be outreach and, and, I mean, inviting every council to be a part of this because we all have this in our, in our wards, and so we try to encourage to bring more of the school, school kids will be out, and it's going to be nice for family to come out and have guests speaking and talking about it, encourage people on, you know, put the gun down, let's stop the violence. We do it every year, this is our third year, and also I want to apologize to the, the citizen in my ward, we're supposed to have had the ward meeting of the week that I was out of town, but I will be planning another ward meeting, and I hope everybody will be able to come out, uh, at Seven University when we have this community outreach and stop the violence, so we can love and unify together.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Johnson.
Did you give a date? I'm sorry, did you give a date?
No, we haven't given the date, but I will give you the date after, you know.
TBA. All right, Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Randolph.
I just wanted to say, um, I'm, I won't make our announcement because we have, uh, members of what I affectionately call the Significant Seven here this afternoon as a part of their, um, citizens' concern, so I will steer the thunder, and, um, I'll just lace that they would come and present to the council this evening.
All right, thanks to Councilwoman Jackson. Uh, Councilmember.
Yes, I just want to remind the citizens about, uh, ten o'clock period's party, it's part of our summer series, uh, the first Friday in Milton, starting at ten o'clock, um, it's from our own time fashion, uh, we have many gospel, uh, groups out there, and we can, uh, have a big family reunion, starting at ten o'clock P M. that night, so if you want to come, just, just go there at six o'clock, and, uh, get it about nine thirty, we'll be ready, because, uh, we love to go to about two a.m., uh, just like, uh, having a party for Jesus, that's all it is, you know, show me, show me, I think that you can fall for Jesus just like they, you know, fall in the club, but we going to fall for Jesus for, uh, two hours.
June seventh.
June the seventh, first, first Friday, June.
Thank you. Another, Councilmember.
I have something for you, I'm going to give it to you now. Okay, you just, you don't.
Okay, well, um, if, if I could ask Reverend Strong to come, to come up here because, you know, we talked about this, this is a just update on the, the, um, journey ride, the retracing journey that we talked about, and, um, we have, have done with the C E O, you need to be thinking of this, because you're sort of up the future, and I just kind of did what you wanted to do, but I needed to do this, um, to tell y'all about this, I, I think that we have found really a home for the journey, for the retracing the journey with, and I think this is probably where it should be, the city will still be working in conjunction with Brown Chapel, and this is in, in, um, Councilman Johnson's ward, but what we'll be doing too is, we'll be doing like we had said, the, uh, just starting at Brown Chapel and then going to the Interpreter Center, and initially I've talked with, with Norbert Nevin, we'll be just leasing the bus from him, and then, uh, it will be starting at, at Brown Chapel, and they already have the tour, uh, guides that are the foot soldiers that work there, and, um, then what, and I got you this little debt thing to type this with, and we have a little, they'll get this little, a little I trace, this is just a mock-up thing of I trace the journey certificate, and it says like, I trace the journey, and then all things kind of the, scrolling down sort of looking thing, like, I trace the journey, great and make for rights, full citizenship, dignity for all persons, for all, wish you all to come, but this certifies that, and then fill in their name on the such and such day of the year, retraced, retraced the journey from Selma to Montgomery, um, originally May, March, and I got sure of the date, I just put it well, nineteen sixty five, and culminated in President Lyndon B. Johnson signing the Voting Rights of nineteen sixty five into law, and then whoever the, the tour guide is foot soldier will sign that, and then they'll get one of these Selma to Montgomery National Historic Trail little ornaments, we'll, we'll pass this around, and then this, but, but we're going to be partnering with Brown Chapel, and I've got a, you know, proposal that'll go to try to get some other initial funding to do that too, but I think that's going to be a great partnership, we're going to, we're going to try this, and see if we can really get it underway, and get it started and do a jump start. I met with Reverend Strong, um, last week, we had a great meeting, and, um, I talked with, had talked with Joyce O'Neill.
Councilmember, did you want to say, thank you, sir?
Okay, thank you, I will put that on there, I just need to put in a date till I can go back there, but that was, you know, I, I get, I, I, I'm ashamed to admit how ignorant I was, but let me tell you, when, when, um, Cory and Angela and I, President Bowie, Councilwoman Benjamin and I, that the year that we all first took office, Councilwoman Benjamin called me, and there was, from the University of Alabama, the Blackburn Institute was here, and she had told the story about, I didn't realize that there were three different attempts, I didn't realize about turnaround Tuesday and Bloody Sunday, and then the actual march, and so, you know, I've learned an awful lot, um, in addition to being really interesting, it is really profound, and I have, have, um, come to have really a, a real deep, deep appreciation and real deep just feeling about it, so, um, but anyway, so thank you for, for the, tell me the date, it's the seventh, is that like March seventh?
Ms. President.
Could I just say, could I just thank, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Youngblood, and, and she spearheads this on behalf of, of joint effort, everyone, I'm sure, uh, what, what she is doing allows us to tap into a, a reservoir, a rich reservoir of resources, um, that I think can be a blessing, not just to Brown Chapel, but the whole city, with the E J I initiative in Montgomery, more and more people are coming here, but I think we have as much, if not more, to offer that they may have exploited their riches a little bit better than, than we have, we're going to catch up, and, and things like you're doing are going to help us to catch up. I thank you for what you do, what we're trying to do now is move to the point where we can schedule Brown Chapel Tuesdays and Thursdays, as I shared with you, from ten to twelve and from two to four, they can go on the Interpreter Center dock at home, and, 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 um, Ms. Madley over at Chamber has been very, very helpful, um, and, and by doing that, I, I think that we all elevate.
Absolutely.
Um, an asset that we have here in the city that is underdeveloped and that can enhance the richness of the experience when tourists come here, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, no, I, and it's, and we got, and, and Jay, I have to talk to him a lot, so that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shaw.
Uh, is Councilwoman making a drive run like we start?
Yes, and I do want to do that, we, we, we need to have a, a drive run and a, a door front, but that's still on, we, I'm glad, and that's still on with us.
Thank you.
Dress rehearsal.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the Blackburn family, will you please come forward? David, come forward. Let somebody start.
I can give you one, you can see, reach me. Did you get a sheet for, for that? Did you get a sheet for that square? I can go get a sheet.
I'm going to ask Adam if he would protect that camera because they would be upset if anything go wrong.
Okay. On behalf of the City of Selma, uh, I would like to present you this with this resolution, uh, naming Booker Adore as Ambassador of the City of Selma, I want to congratulate you, and we look forward to you doing a big endeavor, and, uh, we're going to support the endeavor of, 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 and we're looking forward to all the work that you do. Here's the resolution, and it reads, whereas Haley Blackman was named our Little Miss for West Alabama at Sweet Advantage's Ice Cream Shop in South Alabama, and whereas Sarah Blackman was named our Little Miss for Alabama, and whereas Sarah Blackman will represent Alabama in Orlando in July as our Little Miss, uh, seventy-nine years old division, and whereas her sister Haley Blackman along with parents Steve and David Blackman would accompany Sarah to the global competition, and whereas Haley and Sarah Blackman are indeed shining and bright stars for Selma in that hometown now, let it therefore be resolved that Sarah Frances Blackman, our Little Miss for Alabama, and the said, Paula Taylor Curtis Blackman, our Little Miss for West Alabama, are hereby appointed junior ambassadors to Orlando, Florida, now Little Miss Pageant, and that they carry the very best of wisdom from the seven city councils. All city council signatures have declined, given on this fourteenth day of May, twenty nineteen. Congratulations.
Selma has always been my home, and I would like to see it to be the city it once was, where we fight for all rights.
Councilmember, is anyone else want to say something to our Ambassador for?
Also, too, we have a special, uh, final.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Well, I, I just want to say congratulations to you, um, because, uh, your dad was telling me how, how many keys you play in and all that good stuff, my, my mother, my sister was piano player, so, you know, I tried to learn and I could never learn, so, my ass goes off to you, and, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before she leave, uh, going off, I asked her father, maybe we could get her to come and play us a song at council meeting, at our nation council meeting, if we could, uh, we would love to hear you, and see, we, we want to make this thing go viral, see? I, I, you know, I, I think, I think, um, you know, your dad was telling about the keys and all that kind of stuff, and I know that's hard, you know, I played, I instrumented in the band myself, I played, played baritone, I wasn't no good at that neither, but I did try, but just want to say thank you again for, uh, what you're doing, and I love to hear you talk, I'm for real, I, any, anytime I see your fingers out with your dad, I, I click on my phone, because I need to go say something, it's exciting, so thank you for what you do, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. And for councilmembers, you like something to say to our Ambassador for, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes, and, and she does play, she does play a million piano, uh, Councilwoman Randolph, she, she played at my house, and we had the little party for Sheriff Grantham and Judge Nine, she played, and she played beautifully, and she sings beautifully too.
Mr. Black, do you know who we need to make a check out to you?
No, sir, that information's coming, uh, the, our Little Miss organization has special rules, but we'll make sure that we follow and not get her disqualified before we get there.
That's right. We're proud of you, yes, we're proud of you both, so, councilmembers, I would pass the floor around, and this blank area that you see will be the entity, if it's allowed, the entity in the chair will go.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Now to the citizens of your houses, Mr. Richard Orvis, more motivating votes, and we invite you now, and then.
Hello, I'm Richard Allen Waters, the SGA president of Morgan Academy. I would like to begin by thanking all the council people for the time of dedication. I would like to begin by thanking all the councilpeople for the time and dedication each of you give to the City of Selma. I stand before you today to discuss Morgan Academy's SGA's mission to help make Selma a better place. When I was elected SGA president in March, I along with the newly elected officers made it a priority for the SGA to become more involved in the community. So the executive officers began to brainstorm projects that would launch our community initiative with full force. As we searched, the new SGA officers concluded that a great first project would be to head up a community cemetery cleanup day at Old Live Oak Cemetery. Immediately, the SGA reached out to Councilwoman Maya Jackson to help us organize a community day project at Old Live Oak. On May first, two thousand nineteen, Councilwoman Maya Jackson, the SGA co-sponsors, Ms. Karen Oaks and Ms. Kim Jones, the SGA executive officers, George Turner, SGA Executive Vice President, Mary Ashland Pierce, SGA Executive Treasurer, Maggie Holliday, SGA Executive Secretary, and myself, along with the captain of the Morgan Academy football team, Jeremy Lee, all met for lunch to discuss and plan for our cemetery cleanup day. From this meeting, together our committee developed the Motivating Others and Revitalizing Our Environments campaign, or otherwise known as the MORE Campaign. The MORE Campaign will host its first project, which is a cleanup day at Old Live Oak Cemetery this Saturday, May eighteenth, from eight to ten a.m., which will be led by the Morgan Academy SGA, the Morgan Academy Football Team, and Councilwoman Maya Jackson. We encourage everyone to come out and show your support for our community. If anyone has any of the following supplies to make Saturday run more smoothly, it would be greatly appreciated. Ranks, trash bags, weed eaters, push lawnmowers, hedge clippers, and leaf blowers. As I stand before you today, I would also like to remind you that the Morgan Academy SGA is here to stand with Selma and will continue to work with Selma through the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year to help make Selma a better place. The Morgan SGA would love to help you with your various projects and your wards. On a closing note, I would like to say that the youth in Selma is energetic and ready to make a change for the veterans and the community that we all love. Let us work on the troubles of today, but let us rejoice in the beauty of tomorrow. Thank you.
For us, we have Councilwoman Yonah, Councilwoman Mitch, then Councilwoman Yonah.
I would donate to, to this cleanup, two cases of, of beds. I would, I pass them.
Richard Allen, thank you so much for being a great representation of Morgan Academy. I appreciate the presentation and that you all hit the ground right away as new officers, as the board of the school. You all hit the ground running and decided that one of your projects, your major projects would be Selma. So I thank you for that and I appreciate it. Anything that I can do behind the scenes, anything I can do behind the scenes, you let me know. And, and we'll talk, um, away from this microphone and you let me know where it is our best fit in.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yonah. Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you for allowing me to participate. It was your vision, it was the vision of the, of SGA, um, to be more community oriented. And I thank you for being a great representation of what Selma looks like, um, what Selma is willing to do despite our troubles. And I just thank you for allowing me to be a part of it. Um, thank you for reaching out and, um, I've been texting and calling all day. Looks like we're going to have a great turnout. Been getting some great feedback and so I'm excited about what's going on. And I ask all of you all to be a part of that and if you can't be a part of that, just support us in your prayers and, and sending others and telling others about it. I have spoken with Adam, so he'll probably be speaking with you, um, this afternoon or, or, you know, contact information, contact me. And so we wanna make sure that we get, get this in the paper. Um, we talked on last week, he said he would wait till this weekend. So I, I, I'm thankful for that and for all of you. I'm, I'm thankful for the, um, teachers that have stepped up and supported you all's effort. And thank you to the young people have decided that we want to do something more. This is the day after graduation and so rather than, than slipping in, um, you all decided to get up and, and, um, get to work. And so I'm so thankful.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Yonah. Councilwoman Yonah.
Well, Richard Allen, y'all just do me mighty proud.
Yes.
And thank all of y'all for, um, just being awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Thank you so much. Now to our City Treasurer, Ms. Remini, welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Good evening, citizens of the city and city council. I'm glad to be back in service. We have three reports to cover that's from February to April, so I'll try to run through it briefly. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me. I'll start with the sales tax report for February twenty nineteen. Sales tax for February was seven hundred six thousand five oh two forty-seven. In comparison to FY twenty eighteen, it's down by seventy-one thousand. Lodging tax was twenty, twenty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-nine from, for February nineteen, um, up by sixteen hundred, sixteen twenty-three eighty-five. Tobacco tax was up to twenty-one thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, up by ten thousand four oh four. We have lodging tax, our tax, that was five thousand five twenty thirty-five, up by seven hundred and seventy dollars. Sales tax for half cent portion, that we took in for half cent, was eighty-eight thousand three twelve eighty, up by eight, down, I'm sorry, by eight thousand nine twenty-six. Simplified seller use tax was twenty-seven thousand seven twenty-three, up by eleven thousand two seven three twenty-three from twenty eighteen. Now for the February, um, total revenue received as of February twenty eighth was eight, eight million, eight nineteen, one thirty, twenty-three. Total expenditures for the general fund for February twenty eighteen year as of, as of February twenty eighth was eight million, seven sixty-nine, one eighty-three oh two.
Do we have the same question? Can I back you up just a little?
Um, you and I need to make that clear.
Okay.
Total revenue received was, uh, year to date was twelve million, three oh eight seven seven.
Twelve million, three oh eight seven seven.
And that's on page thirty-two.
Okay.
At the budget performance report, so I need to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilwoman Yonah, was that the question?
Yes, ma'am. So you, you go, for me to see how many expended. It was the correct amount.
Go back to the expenditures.
That was, that was the total, going back to the expenditure.
It was.
Eight million, seven sixty-nine, one eighty-three oh two. That was including other agencies. Specifically for the general fund. Let's see, the total amount.
Was that the eight million, eight nineteen?
That's for off the roll-up, I apologize. And the general fund was six million, one forty-seven, eight fifty-eight. And total revenue received was eight million, eight nineteen, one thirty, twenty-three. Moving on to the March sales tax report, um, March twenty nineteen. Sales tax were eight hundred, one ninety-three ninety, up by forty-four thousand, three eighty-one from the prior year. Lodging tax was twenty-five thousand, forty dollars and forty-nine cents, up by four hundred and twenty-one dollars from the previous year. March tobacco tax was twenty-two, five seventy-one, up by, down by three thousand, four fifty-eight. Lodging tax was eleven thousand, five thirty, forty-one, down by one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Sales tax portion, half cent sales tax portion was one hundred thousand, twenty-four dollars, up by five thousand, five forty-seven from the previous year. Simplified seller use tax was thirty-seven thousand, three oh nine, up by twenty-five thousand, nine sixty-two from the previous year.
Repeat that one, sir.
Okay. That's the sel, the simplified seller use tax. It was thirty-seven thousand, three oh nine in March.
Can you ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What question?
Well, let's, let's finish this answer first. Go ahead.
Okay. It's thirty-seven thousand, three oh nine, um, thirty-eight, which is, uh, up from, by twenty-five thousand, nine sixty, sixty-two point seven two.
Up by twenty-five thousand?
Right.
I mean, that's why I want you to repeat it.
Yeah, I know.
I heard you say what you said. I thought you said, up by twenty-five thousand.
It's up by twenty-five thousand.
Okay, got it.
This, this is only information provided.
And Councilwoman Randolph?
Yeah. What, what is that simplified tax?
That's like online tab. Online purchases.
A lot of people do that online.
Shop local, shop local, shop local.
Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman Yonah.
I know one year, um, when it first started, we could give funds quarterly, you can take that.
I, I couldn't verify that. We did it from last year, I think, when we actually really started.
Started, first.
And then it's March.
It's March, the first of the year.
It was quarterly initially and then last year, this would be the second year, it was, um, monthly. So I wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, say, I know that initially that the, um, simplified, some of you said, um, that the, the conference issue was really spiking. It was, it was, um, something that they're glad that they got into the market of getting. It was funds that were left on the table, um, prior to initiating. But I wanted to see was that, um, twenty-five thousand dollar increase, was that because we received it in a quarter? Or is this just an increase over last year because we received it every month? Did any of you something to the tax rate that we, how we get with?
I, I, I will verify it, but I know previously, as you said, it was July twenty seventeen when it was quarterly. Um, I will find out. We can check with the state as to why, um, why, why that, that spike in that increase. Uh, but it is a good sign for our, our area, cause of what it's saying is even though they are shopping online, we're able to recoup that taxes. Because there are some sites that still, if you're shopping online, you're not able, you don't have to account for your state taxes. But it's becoming, other states are becoming more and more online as our going to be.
I do think, um, what you said was the change in the way that it is being, um, given out to the city. So we, the cities will get a greater portion of it, the way they're divided.
Yeah, based on the necessary.
I'm excited that we're getting it. Not excited that it's not handling here and brick and mortar, not really.
Councilwoman Yonah? Thank you.
You're coming back.
Ms. Wade, do you know about, we have some businesses and actually some plants here and, and then some, some businesses that, that actually ship things out. About the, one time when I was at a lead function, they, they had somebody there from the internal, the state revenue there. He, he was telling us that when people ship, uh, things to other places, that they are, wherever the point of origin is, that they are supposed to collect tax. Like if they ship it from Atlanta, Georgia, they collect Atlanta, Georgia's taxes. If they ship something from Selma, Alabama, they need to collect taxes from Selma, Alabama and pay it there. Do you know about how that is being checked, the businesses that ship things, sell things and ship from here, that is being looked into and checked?
Oh, I.
And I realize that comes out of tax and license, but, um, I will certainly make a note of it and, uh, give it to tax collector, um, for the shipping
and just find out additional information and also check with the county because we, we don't run out of these, they may be received as well.
So I'll have that answer for you back. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Yonah? Your total expenditures, the revenue for March?
March, year to date.
Yes.
Um, are, are you referring just to the roll-up amount or for all or just the general fund? If, um, on page thirty-three, you found year to date expenditures, eleven million, two seventy-five, seven thirteen, twenty-seven. And the revenue was thirteen million, six eighty-three, eight eleven, forty-one. And I, I, I haven't gone over that one, but I'll go down the list for you, break it down for the city, if you'll allow me to. Um, total revenue for March of twenty nineteen for the general fund only was ten million, fourteen thousand, seven twenty-seven. No, yes, ten million, fourteen thousand, seven twenty-seven. That's page five of thirty-three.
Do you have a question? I need a formal question. You say this is the general fund.
Right. For the, for the total expenditures for March year to date was seven million, two fourteen, five twenty-two. So total revenue year to date, we had received in the year was ten million, fourteen, seven twenty-seven eighteen. This is, and I'm referring to the general fund.
How much did you spend?
You were being mentioned at work session. We, we, we have colors around the deals. At what point did you get to the, at what date did we income?
Per the accounting manager, I took, I was told that it happened in January. That all the deals, there's no outstanding deals other than what's currently due for the month.
So we're looking at, might have been.
January.
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 January. That's, that, according to our county manager, all deals were paid current as of January twenty nineteen.
Wow.
And our folks still laid off? Go ahead.
Now, when she's saying all of our bills should pay, um, what does that mean?
Well, my question to her, what outstanding past due deals that we have that's, um, that's in the AP system or just sitting on the desk that needs to be paid? And she said, we paid all our bills up. I said, when did that occur? She said, it happened in January. I said, so the only thing we have outstanding is what's due in this current, for the current month? She said, yes. So my, my understanding from, in the county terms is that we have, we're not more than thirty to sixty days past due.
Okay. Well, now, that's not true unless she's not counting council bills. Because I know we got, is that not counting council bills? Evidently not, because there are some, some bills that, that I know that I have, like some newspaper. We have some newspaper bills and some, uh, newspaper advertising and some, some other things.
If that's the case, if you would just give that to me, I'll research and get back with you. Um, in terms of, um, I guess, I, I, I understand that she's probably speaking in terms of not, not counting what you just said, discount what you just saying, but, um, work that has been completed and that invoices have that happened to me. But I would check into that.
Also, also too, Ms. Wade, if you can look into, uh, on the website up under M.A.S.S., our report. Um, it reported that we have ninety-four laid off and a total savings of one million, nine hundred and nine thousand twenty, something like that. That could be a typo, but it showed a savings of close to two million dollars with ninety-four employees laid off. That could be a typo. Also, Ms. Wade, could you, uh, at some point let us know how close we are to that ninety-day operating, ninety-day operation of funds? If you recall, the auditor's dedicated, we don't have twenty-six. So could you, at, at some point, could you let us know if we are to that ninety-day operation?
I, I would deal with the auditors. He said, um, and have that answer for you. Um, what I will say is that, um, and I don't know if he shared this with you, but we haven't had that in decades. I mean, so, um, I don't, I'm not saying that it's unattainable. Now that we have, now that workers laid off, I'm sure we are at that point where it is obtainable. But just, um, just so you'll know that in the past, that has not been the case and we are working, working, trying to get there, um, but just the like. I, I would deal with the auditors. He said, um, um, and have that answer for you. Um, what I will say is that, um, and I don't know if he shared this with you, but we haven't had that in decades. I mean, so, um, I don't, I'm not saying that it's unattainable. Now that we have, now that workers laid off, I'm sure we are at that point where it is obtainable. But just, um, just so you'll know that in the past, that has not been the case, and we are work, working, trying to get there, um, but just the like.
Can you tell me the past years, noted, he has noted cooperation with that?
I'm sorry?
Tell me the past auditors have not noted.
Yeah, he's, he's noted, but he, that was his recommendation, that on average, that's what you should have. But he also know, know, knows that we have not had that, and that has not occurred.
But this is a recommendation, that's my close to the object.
Yes, sir, I will.
Also, Councilwoman Benjamin?
I, I want to make sure I'm following along with the general, uh, account as you get ready to go into April. If I want to be sure I'm reading, you could wrap that in. Maybe my numbers might be in, in inverted. Um, we have been taking in more than we've been spending, according to the numbers that you've given us, which is?
Yes, ma'am, according to reports, reports of auditors.
We have taken in more than we spent.
Right.
Okay. And, and that goes for February and March, according to the numbers I wrote down that you said?
Right.
Okay. April? Oh, oh, that's right.
Is, is this consistent, um, that we generally take in money, more money this time of the year, and we spend or have less money coming in at later times of the year? I remember speaking to you about June of last year, and, um, you stated, well, there's a time we get more money, and you actually had a spreadsheet on your computer, um, where you kept, where we have actually more money, um, January, February, March, and, and, um, different times of the year, where we may be, um, slower with the funds coming in from June to September. You say you were able to use those funding, um, the funding gained in the, um, earlier part of that year for those, um, revenue decreases in the latter part of the year. Is, is, is that what you're still anticipating doing, or are we garnering more money now than we did last year this time?
Um, no, we're not. In some areas, we maybe, but overall, add in a comparative note from month to month, we're not garnering any, any more money, because we're actually down by a hundred thousand. But there are, there are times, there, it's, the income is cyclical, you know, so there's a variation, you know, some may receive seven hundred thou- we're definitely down from where we were in the previous years, uh, past couple of years, because we were having more increases. But we've had big box stores to close down, and we've had locations more, where there's, um, retails where we had more than one location, they've since closed down. But we're not on a major decrease. And I think that's important for people to understand. Selma has had its challenges, but we're all of not lost. Like, we're not on a major decrease. We just have to curtail our spending to ensure, uh, that we're, we're staying with our revenues that we're receiving. Okay?
I will.
I, I want to also ask, we're based on, just let's look at the general fund. There's a difference of about, if I'm breaking about three million dollars, can you tell me exactly what the difference is for the month of March?
In comparison to?
To what we received and what we expended, revenues and expenditures.
For March, okay. So, based on the budget performance report, year-to, year-to-date for the general fund alone, received ten million, fourteen, seven twenty-seven. Okay? Um, and when we take a look at the expenditures for the general fund, um, we've spent seven million, two fourteen, five twenty-two. So yes, the answer is roughly about three million dollars.
You, you index, that's payroll, uh, mostly, it comes out of the general fund separate?
Well, payroll takes a large part, uh, part of, large part of your spending, but I would have to do an analysis to see what that is, because sometimes it may be a matter of timing of when we made the payment. Like, if we're working, there's major project going on, and the payment may not be due until April. You're not seeing it here, it's not reflected, but suddenly we made a seven hundred thousand dollar payment next year, next month, and you're saying, wow, it's up, but it's, it's all, it's contingent on what, what is happening with the, with the city is spending. So I will research that further, and I can give you, uh, give more clarity.
I, I, I guess what I'm, um, the bottom line is, if we had those ninety-four workers, would we be in a position where we did not pay our bills?
I would have to do an analysis for it.
Can you give that for?
I will say that, um, prior to me leaving, I, I didn't quite understand why we were in predicament, because, um, we've had the St. James Hotel, we've had major casualties happen, we had several things to occur, and, and, uh, and of course, you know, the St. James cost us a lot of money. And then we faked a miracle, and we still managed to pay our bills. We still managed to keep the employees employed. And we didn't do, when this administration come in, we didn't take on large undertaking of new hires. We were just trying to maintain. So, um, there was some confusion to me, and by me being in and out, in and out, I couldn't put my hand on the pulse. So, right now, we have to just take evaluation of what, what is doing. And I intend to look in, into the payroll, since that is the largest part of our spending, to see, um, what areas are we overspending, or spending a lot of overtime, or, and so it will take me to a deeper evaluation and deeper analysis, and I do intend to do that. But, um, to answer your question, um, payroll is the largest part of the budget, because you need manpower to get out there and do the work. Uh, but I would just have to look and, and see what's going on.
You know, I, I, I'm just going to take it after with more. I just received a, um, email, um, from a prominent, um, business owner, and he complained about the, the large, um, overgrown, um, areas of reds, um, when you first come across a bridge, and the weeds and things of that sort. Um, and the narrative has been that, um, we have to get rid of so many people because our, because of our budget shortfall. So I know with you here, I feel more comfortable. I get the questions, um, answered, and, uh, they're, they're doing a good thing, and said, as a corporate citizen, you know, they're going to pay for this to be done, so they would like to see go forward what the city has to offer. And so, um, what we've discussed here will be a part of our.
I, I, I will, I will tell you candidly, that I have been researching payroll, and there are some salaries, ma- and maybe not a lot, that were not in the budget, that continues to be on the budget, that for those high-paying salaries, you could easily transition probably about two or three, uh, public wor- works, workers back to work, if you would eliminate those, those salaries out of the budget, as you already have approved. If they could just continue working, and then you allow a few to come hot, they could be better used in terms of the labor pool.
Are you talking about that over a hundred thousand, a million, a hundred thousand dollars of, um, positions that were not utilized, or were not, um, approved in the budget, like you say?
Right, yes, absolutely.
I, I, I did want to ask you one more question. You can come back to this, but the first thing you gave us was this, um, employee pay report. Um, you now have access.
I do have access. As of, as of this morning, I was able to access the payroll. Thank you, Mayor Milton, for allowing me to get in the payroll. I have, um, pulled up the report. There are still some discrepancies, but hopefully I can get with the personnel department, and we can find out what they are.
Okay. Because I, the first thing I noticed is that my salary didn't increase by eight thousand dollars. So I, I, but this is what is in the system, even though it may not be correct, and it may not be reflected on my, my paycheck.
Right.
This is what is in the system. What I'm, I'm concerned about is, is we have a system that's supposed to, um, help us manage this, and we have erroneous information, but we're still printing off correct checks. How many other areas where we may be putting something erroneous and printing out a different amount for the check?
Well, typically, there's been a checks imbalance between the personnel department and the finance department. If there's a, a new hire or change in salary, prior to me leaving in this administration, and when we had that H.R. Director, Mr. Harron on board, there was a system of checks and balances that we had, that there was a personnel actual request form called P.A.R. that was submitted from personnel notifying us of any salary changes, um, increases, or if termination. So we had a sys- system of checks and balances as well. From my understanding, the absence, um, uh, my staff indicated that that is no longer coming through us. We're no longer receiving that information. So it's kind of hard to go back and find out what changes have occurred without me taking the actual budget, um, and doing a manual check and balance. And so that, that's going to take a while.
So, uh, here's a breakdown in terms of controls and practices that you had established prior to your, um, project.
All right, uh, we have Councilwoman Benjamin and Councilwoman Lucio, then we need to go into executive session for about twenty minutes, and prior to, uh, terminal notice, you would now go on the bench. Ms. Wade, over the last eighteen months, we've had eleven businesses to close, and out of eleven businesses to close, that was a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars in sales stuff, so.
And not including, uh, what we have against licenses.
Police, yeah, police, law, people. Councilwoman.
Ms. Wade, you were naming, um, all the things that we've gone through, and, uh, we, we still kept our employees. I don't know if you went through this one or not, or maybe you were just joining us during the session. I don't know if you were here. But we also went through a recession, and, uh, we didn't lay off a soul.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, so add that to the list of things that we had to go through without a layoff.
That's correct.
This has just not happened in the history of administrations.
That's right. We did have recession, and, um, my recommendation always is before you do a layoff, at least attempt to do a furlough, you know, and see how that goes. And I think that we kind of put the cart before the horse, not to say that we didn't have, uh, we've always had a cash flow issue, not necessarily that we could not pay our bills. That was unheard of. It was a, it was a delay in paying the bills, but not that we couldn't pay the bills. So like I said before, I have not been here, I've been heading out, so it's hard to determine what, what, what caused the distress to make that happen. But a recession happened around, around the country. I worked for the City of Atlanta. I was affected by the recession. Um, and we did do furloughs, and that, and that was the first option. And then there were some layoffs, and then the, things improved. So I always, um, look back at that to say that Selma has done a great job, um, during that timeframe of maintaining a credit rating, and managed to keep their employees on board. Now, there's, we're, we're going down in our credit rating, and we are having a layoff. That affects our credit issue. So when we talk about wanting to, uh, build municipal complexes, when you talk about wanting to make purchases aside from the USDA, you, you have to consider our credit rating, because that causes, uh, and even if we want to defeat a bond, or do a new bond issue, that affects our interest rate. So we have to keep these things in mind as we go along. And, um, I always, and we have a legal debt limit. I'm not sure what it is now, but it was about eight hundred thousand, I think, on the previous year. But so when we make a purchase over here, purchase over here, we got to keep in mind, there are certain things, not all the things that we're doing, that will affect our legal debt limit, and will, and then it also affect our credit rating. So we just have to make wise choices when it comes down to finances.
Absolutely. You, you're right. Selma did a great job of, of, um, struggling through that, uh, even when our friends around us were, were going bankrupt. Cities around us, and we knew these matters personally, they were going bankrupt, and little Selma stayed a look. Um, so my second question is, you were, you were talking about H.R., and there are, uh, positions that are still being paid, uh, uh, from state funds, that we have defunded.
All right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Council, if we can move as soon as possible on that, on whatever, I, I just needed a professional person to tell me that that was happening. And so, uh, we need to find out, Mr. President, what we need to do next about, uh, defunded positions in the budget that are still being paid. Would you find that out from our lawyer, Mr.? Is he here?
No, he's not. This is from.
I should have requested him to be here.
Oh, we did, we questioned him.
Oh, we did. Oh, where is he?
He couldn't make it.
He couldn't make it.
He's not at the bottom, is he?
Not, that attorney.
Not that attorney.
Oh. Oh, that attorney. The big guy. Okay, the big guy, okay. Yeah, yeah, big guy, he can handle it. But yeah, would you, if, if you find any more, uh, positions, or anything else that we said remove from this budget as you move through your process, please provide us that list as you go, if you don't mind, matter of trade.
Right. Councilman Lucio, then we need to go to a session.
Ms. Wade, I am. I mean, it, it just finished. I'm particularly deaf to know that we have incurred with our bills. But what I would like to do with you is to bring to this council, um, identifying annual payments that we must make out of our general fund, because if you may have three million dollars here now, that may, money may have to go toward paying your bills. So I think it would be wise for us to know what financial obligation that we're going to have in spite of this, uh, appearance of money being safe. So bring us, bring a list of, of, of debts and the payment schedule of debts.
Yes, sir, I will. And let me just clarify. When we create the budget, unless there's an error or omission, and sometimes that does occur, um, it's accounted for in the budget, within the brims of the budget. I think when you're talking about the money, you're talking about the actual cash we have on hand that's sitting in the bank account.
Right.
So, um.
And, and, and that's what's important. Pay for seventeen million dollars, pay for whatever.
I hear you. That's, that's, it's just a guide, an important guide that we don't go over. Yes. Um, but, uh, I, I'll definitely give you those lists, uh, particularly above payments, because those are the large amounts. And then also the capital equipment payments, because tho- those count just as important as whatever.
So I was a big to those persons.
Okay. I'll show you the.
Mr. President? Yeah, Mr. President? We got to go to executive session, but if you don't mind, can I follow up with some questions for our Treasury Board, if we can have an executive session. My next several.
Yeah, she didn't make it, I said, if I'm going to pay for now or later.
We don't do it, we need to go.
Angela will come in.
So I have a question for executive session.
So, Mr. President?
For about twenty minutes to discuss legal matters.
President Boyd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley? Councilwoman Youngler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, we're done for about twenty minutes.
Thank you, pretty girl. I got a few kids. Anything else coming to be thanked? I got a few children. My wife said that I can't bring up the daddy like a surgeon. The president's not going to leave. None of the crazy don't come up. Well, it's the city council. You go try to keep it, you go to hell. Thank you, Mr. President.
I did.
Tell them to let's go.
I waited with twenty-nine. Yeah, we gotta get it off. Yeah, plenty of time they came. I was trying to get them.
Hey, cause for nine to seventy-five hours, we didn't have time.
Y'all come home, let's get through now. I'm talking to the baby.
Y'all have a poster to make a name for. I got a poster on the floor by Councilman Johnson. So I can tell you I'm getting road call.
President Wood. President Wood.
Okay. Road call.
President Wood.
Yes.
Councilman Bowden. Councilwoman Youngler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas. Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Jackson.
That's what I was looking at, did she say?
I didn't hear it.
In the essence of time. Uh, let's go to the committee reports and go through them all.
They do it at the workstation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We need to go ahead and put at the work.
Recreational Committee.
Uh, no report, uh. It's more than I think, I have to have some reason, but uh, but basically, I see it going on. But uh, at this time, uh. But anyway, we say closing month.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, uh, for those, uh, that we didn't get opportunity to say, I have Mother Day too, to all of you all, happy belated, uh, Mother Day to you all. I'm so sorry that we didn't get opportunity to do it, uh, during the Council meeting, but anyway, uh, I hope everybody had a beautiful Mother Day. I'm pretty sure it was Saturday, but uh, but being happy, uh, belated Mother Day. Um, also again, I want to mention, um, to the President about American Legion Post three twenty-four. We'll be doing a cleanup at, um, Lawrence Harrison Morgan Garden on May twentieth at eighth Antioch. And we will be having, um, a lot of, um, food and drinks and, and you know, stuff to keep our bodies. And so that's the part I've been taking road in there, trying to take care of the workers and make sure they don't, uh, get wounded and, and things like that. But anyway, I want to thank everybody and, and good night.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Let's start the committee, uh, Public Safety Committee, uh, we will be having a Public Safety Committee tomorrow at, uh, five o'clock here. Following with the club on the evening at six o'clock, uh, yeah, that's tomorrow. All right, Community Development, Councilwoman Youngler.
Oh, I'm down with forward.
Detective Burke, Councilwoman Stewart.
Public Works and General Services is still in recess. However, we have not reconvened to talk about the, uh, talk about, talk about what we're going to do about this trash and garbage that has infested our city. But I'm hoping and praying that we do get a response from the Attorney General, Mr. President, on the information that you're going to be forwarding to them.
Tomorrow.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get some, uh, relief.
Yes, sir.
In the form of being able to eul- eul- uh, to eulogize some funds to help us, uh, rid this overflow that has taken on every ward in the city. Uh, closing remarks, I hail my public, I'm sorry, I hail my award meeting, uh, first tonight, uh, last week. And as hell at the Plant Street Baptist Church, it was well attended, a lot of affirmation was shared. I do think that the weather created a major part in that and prevented us from having a standing room on there. Uh, however, there will be, uh, another award meeting, I tried to have a meeting for months. So there, there will be information that will be disseminated about the next award meeting, I'm trying to decide where the next award meeting is going to be. Fortunately, I have multiple places where I sit that welcomes me and having those, uh, award meetings. Just stay tuned for when I get the word out as to when the next award meeting is, uh, is going to be held. Uh, also, I'm going to ask my colleague to make sure.
I would, I just put a note in my phone, come out.
I need, I need to talk to him quick, Sam. Because we do need to have a group service so that, that the history of the city itself is being depicted as it has been done, as I'm here, I hear. So with this council, that's, uh, and, and the body, if we need a, a picture of us, uh, that will show the administration of the service. As I said, we want to ask everybody to, when you see something, when you see little Sam walking down the street. With a seventy-two inch TV on his back, talking about going to the TV shop. There's no more TV shops in America. So call somebody, don't try to apprehend, don't try to stop them, but calls the people in blue. And, and they will be there to kill up little Sam and return your very valuable items.
All right, thank you, Councilman Stewart. Uh, Finance Committee, uh, we will be calling the league very soon, Ms. Wade is back. But also, I'm going to put a recommendation on the floor that, uh, Ms. Wade and also Ms. Kim Lewis come to our first meeting to give us a report, uh, as it relates to the finances. At this time, go ahead.
Could we also get, get an update from R D S as to where the dividend tax status is?
Yes, sir. We will bring her going to be in our board.
Thanks, sir.
I have a motion on the floor to have Ms. Wade and also Mrs. Kim Lewis to come to our first council meeting to give us an update. And also, I think Councilwoman Thomas, that Ms. Wade to report.
On the finance.
Finances.
Of, of, so we'll know what we keep up with the finance coming out of the tax office.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to, we need that to be put up under Ms., under Ms. Wade.
Okay.
The treasury, uh, how that, uh, the finance of the funds that been taken in.
Okay.
I think she's saying department. Are you saying?
The department, uh.
I think, yeah, I was saying to be saying, Councilwoman Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, are you saying, uh, the Tax Collectors Department come on the finance?
Yes, give a report.
I thought that's what she was saying.
The report, uh, can we do that? No, that's the, that's the operation.
Not only that, um, uh, I've been informed that you can't have two appointed positions. So appointed position being a supervisor, you can't put another appointed position under the supervision of someone else. So Ms. Lewis cannot be under the supervision of Ms.
That's not what I'm saying.
The treasurer because both of them are.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay. Based on which.
No, that's not what I'm saying, let me say, you can't keep for what I'm saying.
I was trying to speak for what you were saying, but what I was clarifying was the statement that Councilwoman Benjamin stated, and so.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, like, uh.
It ain't no. We, we good, we always.
I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, like, your monthly, when the money comes in, I'm saying, we have lately have been getting a report, like, coming in telling us that, uh, you know, certain amount of money been coming in through license, certain amount. And I'm saying, not for her to be a, I'm saying, put the, the report, the report, the finance, you know, the money, the funding that comes in.
Now, the reports are different.
Yeah, I ain't sell up on that's what I'm talking about.
Reports are different because I, I heard you say something different, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yeah, used to be, yeah.
No, she's not currently doing this.
No, I ain't doing one.
Ms. Wade got you.
We just have, welcome at the first council meeting, uh, other block two, not going to give a report. All right, road call, I'm going to go.
President Wood.
Yes.
Councilman Bowden. Councilwoman Youngler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, most impressed. Public Buildings, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I want to give two reports, uh, on the Dallas Academy, you know, people been wanting to know. I just got it from President Wood yesterday. Uh, they are just about through with the Dallas Academy and Lady, uh, Lady Love contractor had that bid. And they are like approximately seventy to eighty percent of complete with, uh, Dallas Academy. And, uh, so I look like I'll be in. Okay. And then my next report is to move on with the, uh, Smithers. The, uh, we did, we voted on the Smithers bid with the contract. Ms. Ivy did, uh, the mayor has, you know, I gave you three bids. So the mayor has the one that we voted on then.
Uh, I still have it on my possession, I don't know if you provide him anything yet.
But you told me, you said the mayor, you said Suprina asked for the, the, uh, the contract that we.
She has a copy of it.
So Suprina does have, have a copy of the contract that we voted on?
I guess I'll copy for one.
Okay, so now we can move forward, President Wood, with, uh, Attorney Wood is doing the contract, the, the councils have signed their, their order list to, to finish out the amount that we needed, which, uh, the, what's the group name, the Smithers? Friends of the Bond Smithers will be, uh, putting up ten thousand dollars to.
We put up nine, or?
No, we put up thirteen, thirteen and all.
Did you get, did you get the thirteen thousand?
Yes, we got thirteen thousand, so we should be at, uh.
And then our insurance paid thirteen thousand.
Yeah, and then she said she, Ms., I, Ms. Wade said she was going to look for the check.
We have it.
You have a check. So now I want to do is to get, uh, Attorney Woody to do the contract and, thank you, go ahead, all, y'all be in business.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, uh, Captain.
One more thing, one more thing, one more thing. I need you.
She's asking who's going to do the work, Councilwoman. She's asking who's going to do the work.
Oh.
Go ahead, we can have a conversation. They'll tell you.
One more, one more, this is very important, traffic light. We have a traffic light that went out, been going out, going out on the corner of First Avenue in church. The box is, was back, it was put there since, been there since nineteen fifty. Uh, Lee Dale has been going backwards and backwards and backwards and back and forth to now, there's nothing else that he could do. It cannot be repaired, it cannot be at all. I went out, because it's, it's been almost several accidents, I had to get him to put up, uh, stop signs. And, uh, we went, we have another box down on the other corner of L A Anderson in church. It's a box of, we've been put there, been there since nineteen sixty. We have problem with that light, but, uh, the reason why I asked this council is, I asked Ms. Wade. Is there any, we have to have a box, we need a light there, it cannot, that's danger. The light is gone. So, uh, he told, he got talked to Ms. Wade and we talked to Stephen. And I asked Ms. Wade, uh, could she find any money in public work where we can get this, this box? This has, it's got to be a brand new box.
How much is the box?
The box is seven thousand and four hundred thirteen dollars. It cannot be repaired at all.
All right, Councilwoman.
Uh, it's to you, it's, it's to you, it's a suggestion, if, when you all talk, uh, if you all consider, um, looking into the red light camera funding. Um, so you can get a new box, did, did you talk to her about that?
Well.
Because it's a safety.
Out of the police department.
I have a suggestion, I offered to her, because they had small tool with Carolina, I think, for the most of the year, they almost spent like a thousand dollars. Um, we can have a discussion with Stephen, but they have some cost savings in their budget in some areas, and they have about eight thousand dollars unused. But my recommendation is to transfer, to do a budget adjustment to, into, uh, traffic maintenance repairs to cover that.
Well.
Uh, also, y'all trying to find money for that? There's a red light on the corner of, uh, Jeff Davidson, Lafferty Street, that's falling apart, every week a piece drop on the street. So that need to be, that, that light.
I see, I know what you're talking about, but when one go out, where you got a day-to-day traffic going both ways. And, uh, I, I mentioned this before to the council, uh, that we have some lights in the city itself that we really needs to fix. But then we had no choice now because the box is completely, Lee Dale has been there so many times, repair, repair, repair. And now the box gone, because it's a name. And now, the box gone, because it's a nineteen, it's a nineteen fifty box.
But I'm saying, that light on good day, it can fall in the street, it's falling apart.
Well, right now we need a lighter, and, uh, if I can get this light put up there. Get, not the, the box, we need a box up, the box gone.
Councilman, Councilwoman Jackson.
If it, if it pleases the, uh, if it pleases the council, we were offered from the city of gas and several lights that were in working condition, um, and it was reported to me they were, um, denied because, it was denied from the administration because they weren't new. Um, but they were in working order and they're similar, and that's why they reached out to us, the, the lights that we currently have. So I would like to see if they're still available. The last, uh, call that I received, um, about a month and a half ago, I, uh, asked them to please save them for us because if they don't need them now, I assure you, I'll use them later. Um, and so, um, if you allow me to call and see.
Please do.
That could be a cost-saving measure. And if, if I haven't heard anything, I'll be sure to let you know, um, Madam President, President, I'm sorry, Madam Treasurer, by the week's end, and, and also include the council if they don't have them available. But that could be a cost-saving measure, I mean, may just cost us gas going to go home.
That's fine. Councilwoman, um.
I would, I would like to say to this committee, I mean, say to this county, if you knew that when we was talking about the lights back here a month ago, that we were offered lights in our city that we need, why wasn't that brought to our attention?
I don't have the authority to make the decision to receive them and that, but I've asked permission that we can. Um, and so if they come to the front door and the mayor turns them around, he still have that, we can say whatever we want. But if he turns them around, we still can't get them.
But you knew them.
So we, I did get a call right after this conversation, the last time, and I asked them to please keep them. And so again, I will say, before we spend that money, allow me to reach out. But if they come and they're delivered, or the mayor refuses to allow our officers to go and get them, we're still in the same position because all our facilities over there they operate.
Councilwoman Thomas, anything else?
Nothing else, I've heard it all.
Captain, quick, Councilwoman Randolph. Uh, no report, but, uh, I, I want to find out, uh, is, is all our garbage trucks, is backup line, anybody know? There were a couple of them once in the shop.
Broke down again?
Yeah.
What?
And then, uh, I was told that we have five trucks, but we don't have five drivers. So, uh, you know. I'll check into it tomorrow. Can you check into it? Because I don't know. I'll be first done tomorrow. You know, uh.
These are those trucks?
Yeah, the, the new trucks, uh.
They keep going to repair? Because you know.
Wow.
Because they picking up, uh, stuff that they're not supposed to pick up. People cutting down trees and putting them on the side of the road, or off of private property. And this, and picking up refrigerators and mattress and stuff that we, that we doesn't. Yes, but these trucks ain't got that power. This truck got the little round pickup.
More reason for us to have way to go, okay.
Well, you said, we, we listed in the street looking a little bit.
All right, ask committee, Councilwoman Benjamin.
No report again, thank you, Council, for all the support on last week. I do appreciate you all, remind, reminding you again of the date to put in your calendar for Jazz on the Grass. It's June, uh, fifteenth. And remind them Magnolia one, Magnolia two, and Magnolia senior building, that we will have a meeting on this video that was made concerning, uh, putting something on the city that was not a city issue, where the city tried to come in and give relief and help. We will have a meeting and hopefully the health inspector will be available. So, uh, those out there in Magnolia one, two, and senior building, please be ready for this exclusive morning.
All right, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. And our next work session will be Thursday, uh, May twenty-third, because that Monday will be Memorial Day. So let's try to move it back to the, uh, that Thursday. At this time, until, until Memorial. Oh, I'm sorry, five minutes, I'm sorry.
Sure, your family's.
Go ahead, Council. Go ahead.
We don't have to do it tonight, Mike.
Oh, you might, yeah.